Next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, October 11th, 2019 at 9:00 AM. At the community center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Consent agenda. Minutes of the board of supervisors, regular meeting held Friday, September 13th, 2019.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Any public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes. Action agenda. Patricia Tyson's running about a half hour behind. So we're going to move to A to B. Public hearing resolution number 2019-09-27-37. Resolution to Sunland Lake Sebring. Improve the district to establish and adopt the final budget for the fiscal year 2020. Based on the estimate of revenues and expenditures for the district's general utility, golf, and capital project funds, confirming the annual operation and maintenance assessment, and providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to second any discussion from the board. Any public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
Supervisor Steagle?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes. Okay, add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
Yes, we have a petition from Mr. Raymond Horneck. With the presentation from the traffic study scheduled at 9 o'clock, he is not here. He was planning on being here around 10 o'clock. So we can go ahead and, I don't know if we want to try to call him, or...
Do you have the petition?
Yes.
Is there any reason you can't read it?
Absolutely, yes. I, Raymond Horneck, and Tom Worth, with Magnolia Villas' request, the Sunland Lake Board of Directors review a payment option for the water connection fees for the Magnolia Golf Villas. The purpose of the request is we will not be building all 47 units at one time. Building of each units will be as the market will allow. We would like to split the payments as follows. Fifty percent initially to begin, which is $42,562.50, and 50% after the 10th unit has sold and closed within the new community at $42,562.50. Total price paid, $85,125. This payment option will help us greatly as we already have an enormous amount already invested in the community without any recouping of funds currently. Based on the sales recently of the Augusta Villa units on Sunrise Drive, we hope this will happen swiftly as those did. Our hopes are to create a new community and lifestyle which will be a great addition and showcase the Sunland Lake District in its fantastic amenities. We thank you for consideration in this matter, Mr. Horneck and Mr. Worth.
I have a couple of questions. Do we want to leave this open-ended in terms of time? Or do we want to put a time limit on when the second half needs to be paid regardless of sales? That's for the board to consider, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I also am wondering where the guarantee is. We certainly wouldn't think that this would happen, but it's always a risk with the developer goes bankrupt, we're stuck holding the bag on $40,000.
Yeah, my recommendation would be, I'm not sure what our costs, we know what our upfront costs are, if his initial payment pays all of our upfront costs or not. But I think the easiest thing to do, if it's not going to disrupt his financing, is just to lean on the property. And we'll put a lien on the property for the other $42,562, and then it'll be a 0%, you know, we can do a written agreement that says we're not going to foreclose a lien as long as he pays after the 10th unit sold. And if for any reason that doesn't happen, you know, we've got a lien on the property. So if anybody else comes in to buy the property up, or it gets sold at foreclosure sale, you know, something, we've got a way to recoup our funds because we've got that lien on the land.
Well, it depends on what's in front of you.
Yeah, exactly. That's the question, is whether or not it's going to, we don't want to disrupt the financing that he's already got in place, so, but at the same time, we have to protect ourselves.
My thought was that we require him to put up a bond.
That's an option as well?
That way you know you're going to get your money. I mean, I'm okay with the concept, as long as we're recouping at least our initial investment. And Tanya assures me that we are. Apparently, he's already put in the infrastructure. This is just a tap, which is going to cost us very little. So I'm okay with that, but I do think we need to be secured one way or the other, some way.
Is this agreement with Ray Horneck or with Horneck Homes?
I don't know who specifically owns the, is it Magnolia Golf Villas? I don't know the specific identity, I can look into that.
Has he sold any units yet? Anybody know?
He has not sold any units that we know of. He's starting to build the first three units of this project.
So he hasn't taken any, because I remember the last time he tried it, he sold four units before he even attempted to break ground.
As far as we know, he hasn't started. He's got his first three going up, he's pulled permits on those first three. So I'm sure those will be his first three model homes to try and get some sales.
That building that's going up now, that's...
That's just the office building, like the cabana, yeah, pool house.
Clubhouse, yeah.
I assume this is just discussion. Should we then say we're okay in concept, assuming we can secure ourselves and that we're not, that we're getting more than repaid for our initial cost? I would be okay with that. But it needs to, I think it needs to come back to us as a specific.
Absolutely. I think probably the best thing to do is to go to him, some options, say, you know, this is, we're agreeing with this in concept, but it needs to be a little bit fleshed out, a little bit better than this. Make sure that we have some sort of security in place and, you know, figure out what works best for him.
If he shows up, we can talk to him, right?
Would a bond not be the simplest?
Yeah, I think it might be. That probably will be the simplest way to do it.
I don't know if you guys remember it or not, but we got into this with Hampton Woods, with the sewer lift station. They did not, we did not require initially, we're still on the other end of this conversation, but we did not require initially a generator at the lift station there between Hampton Woods and Fairway Villas. When they got ready to finish everything, we wanted a generator and they didn't want to pay for it. So, and we allowed it to happen without a bond, without any completion bond, so you're kind of in a, you're in a weak negotiating position, let's put it that way. So I think we need to make sure we upfront, make sure that all of that's taken care of. Bond's the simplest thing, or a letter of credit from the bank, which should cost him very little.
Yeah.
I'm certainly in favor, I want to help him, but we need to protect ourselves, but he's got quite an investment there now. I imagine he's got over a million dollars in the ground now already.
I would think, but we don't want to establish a precedent either, that we're going to do this for the future unless we get certain. This is the first time, I guess, we've ever done this, so we need to make sure that we do it and establish the correct precedent going forward. And I think you're right, let's go talk to him, you guys figure out and bring it back to us in the form of a proposal.
Yeah, I think it should be relatively easy for him to get a bond, you know, that's, probably, we just say, you know, get us a bond and that's, we're good. I think that's, I can't think of an easier way to do it.
I can't either.
Going back to President Branson's earlier question though, should we put a time limit on the sale of the 10th house, or three years after signing the agreement, whichever comes first, or something along that line?
Is there an expiration there on the bond?
Yeah, we'll check the expiration, make sure that the bond's not going to expire for a certain amount of time, and say that, you know, let's say it's a three-year bond, and it's either the 10th, the 10th unit, or, you know, before the, before the bond expires.
I would make it bond or letter of credit. Sometimes it's easier to get the letter of credit than get us the bond.
Any further discussion from the board? Any public comment? Okay, moving on. Staff reports?
I guess I'll go first. I've got a few things. We had Nationwide on-site the last two days. We're finally starting to get that process going with our employees. All of our employees have sat with the Nationwide rep and created their accounts. We expect that transition to be completely finalized end of December, to start fresh January 1st. Also, we've started the process of some of the ADA compliance issues that we discussed last time. We sent off a test file for the closed captioning, which we just got back, so we're making sure that it's all compatible and we can make that start working as soon as possible. And we've also sent off our financial statements, 2018 budget, just to get a firm price on how much those will cost us, so we can estimate how much we can put online and start moving that forward as well. So, just giving you an update on those two things.
You might, you just said Nationwide, but that's really our employees' 401Ks.
Four, yeah, correct, a retirement plan.
For the audience, that's what we're talking about. We changed vendors.
I'm upset. I said, John, all my reports, does anyone have any questions on reports we sent you? No? Okay, good.
Good morning. So I have a few updates as well. The first of which being that this afternoon, the board will be receiving an email, probably from Tanya, that is going to have a first draft of the marketing inquiry procedures that we spoke about at the last meeting. Also, there will be a link that you can preview the new landing page. So that obviously has not gone live yet, but we wanted to give you guys an opportunity to view that, so that should be coming to you this afternoon. Just to follow up on some of the conversation that we had at the last meeting, WDM is working now on billboard locations, available billboard locations, so what they're doing is they're actually securing those buys. Once this is complete, they're going to be sending a summary to Sunland Lake with the information in the media buy location, so we will know where all of those billboards are exactly located as soon as those buys have been made.
The billboards are being concentrated right in Florida?
Yes, I believe that is correct as well. So they're working on those buys right now, but we'll have a comprehensive list of exactly where all those are as soon as the buys are made. And then lastly, with regards to reporting, I spoke with Wayne, the president at WDM. He explained that we will receive monthly reports that basically are compiling the data, and each campaign's and flights' individual success. The way he described it, he said, you can expect that the results, I'm sorry, not the results, the campaign's status and its progress is going to be monitored daily by someone on their staff. They have weekly staff meetings, if you will, where they collectively review all of their campaigns, and then monthly, we will be receiving a report that has all of that data downloaded for us to review.
Is there going to be a way that, since you're the contact person for all this, that at the end of, or on a monthly basis, you'll come to us and say, I've contacted or had contact with X amount of people, 80% was not interested, 10% are on their way down here, I mean, give us that kind of enough?
So like a list of kind of some of the inquiries that have come in?
I mean, a list by name, I mean, a summation of what the progress is with the people who have inquired?
Yeah, that's definitely something. Yep, we can absolutely do that.
That's what I'd be happy to do.
Not a problem.
I guess I have a question around the ADA comments and communication. Are there showstoppers there, or are we being cautious? Or what exactly is going on with that?
We're just being proactive. It's been a trend in just public and private sector that, you know, websites aren't complying, we're not doing enough to make all our information readily accessible to everyone, so we're just being proactive and trying to get our information in a format that is eligible for screen readers in contrast.
So we're going forward as planned?
Correct.
Okay.
I got one other challenge for you, because I'm still confused a little bit on, you know, the eight months that we selected versus a different set of eight months, or I know we're advertising 12, but people up north will be up north during the four months that we're not really going to concentrate the advertising. So to me, it would seem illogical if we concentrated it when they're there than when they're not there. Just throw it out to them and see what kind of reaction.
I definitely will, and one of the things that they mentioned as well is that as the campaign progresses, we'll be able to, it's not like a, we put it in at the beginning and it's set in stone. If we decide that we want to make some tweaks along the way, the software programs that they use, especially with like digital advertising and things of that nature, will track where the clicks are coming from and help them kind of gauge where all of the action is happening, if you will, as far as like the campaign itself. So if we need to tweak certain flights in order to make sure that we're reaching some of those people during those months, then I can't foresee that being an issue at all.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I say that is because I'm thinking, well, if these people have kids, the kids are in school, they're up north, and they're looking for maybe relocating when the kids get out of school and come down and visit during the summer, so when you want to try and reach them is when they're up there.
Okay, not a problem.
Yeah, and the digital ads are running year-round, so they will still be going on during the winter time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry I'm late, there was just a lot of stuff going on at the clubhouse this morning. The wall is officially down, so they've been there since 5:30 this morning, kind of demoing that the dust wall, it's down. We had 250 chairs delivered yesterday, so we're actually going ahead and set those chairs in place immediately, and we're starting to store the old chairs. So it's just kind of been a busy morning already, so we're on the same schedule that I put out in the communication, but really, the best thing is at least the membership can kind of see all the progress now, and it really, really does look great. I, just, now that there's a lot more light in there, we need to kind of get with Tanya too, there's a few little things that we may want to change in colors on some of the walls, but we need to talk about that. Now that it's real lighted, it really kind of changes things, so...
So the 17th is the date now, or 19th, which one?
17, 16, 17, 18, somewhere right in there. We're going to be right in that, right in that, right in that time, timetable.
When Tanya signed the extension, is that till the 14th?
I don't know when it is.
I thought, somebody told me she did it for two weeks.
It's for the 15th.
For the 15th.
Yes, so that's the substantial completion for the contract. It's October 15th. Now the lanai, they're going to have, we'll have that opened up by Monday the 7th.
Yeah, looking like Monday.
Yeah, Monday the 7th. This is the lanai area. Paint, carpet, tile.
They're painting today, too, so, I mean, really, we're at that point where the tile around the bar is going to take, it's kind of the thing that's, it's just getting rid of that old tile, and the way that they laid the old tile has been a little bit more challenging, and that's what's going to, that's, right now, that's the thing that's, because we're close to put down carpet, and they're putting the air conditioner in this afternoon, so we're really close in the lanai.
What's the schedule for the tables?
Tables right now are on the 12th, and I need to double, I need to double-check that.
Ooh, you got to put them together.
I do. I was being cheap. I had to save a thousand dollars.
So have you had any plans at this point, based on your latest information, on when you're going to do a grand opening and what it may entail?
No, I mentioned something that, the newsletter's about to come out too, and I mentioned something that in the newsletter. As soon as we kind of get things rolling and get the kitchen kind of sorted, we'll plan something right away. It'll be probably first couple of weeks in November, so, and we'll do some kind of big grand, big grand opening. Let everybody see everything, and we'll do a big tour and take everybody around, so we'll make it a big event.
Are we okay with the wedding?
We're all okay with the wedding. So I had a, I actually had a food inspection, a health inspector came yesterday, and kind of told him where we're at and what we're, so he's kind of given us the go-ahead to go ahead and get open, even without the license being approved, and I kind of told him what my plans were about the wedding, what, so everything we're doing is all okay with him, so I talked to him personally.
Let us hear yours tonight.
Are we ready for another whistleblower?
No.
Just kidding.
I hope it works. I know you do.
I'm ready for it to be done.
I guess Earl's not here, anything to talk about the golf course?
Yeah, I can, Earl's our wedding. The range mat is completed, I think everybody's seen it. We're really waiting, we're keeping it closed until we get it backfilled, we just don't think it's safe yet for people to get on it, so we just don't want somebody tripping, and... But that, the old area, we need to work on that too, and that'll be kind of a series of plantings and sod, both, so especially that area where you're driving right up towards there, so we've ordered some plants, and we're going to change that area up a little bit and make it a little bit more appealing. Other questions about the course, I guess, I mentioned the monument tree on number 11. We'll start, we'll start looking real soon about another tree to replace that, so it might not be in the exact spot, but it'll certainly be in the same area. I think, Mr. Steagle, I think, I think Earl is, I think you're the only one that he's talked to already about some of his plans on the entryway, just because I think you caught him, but he'll be getting with every one of y'all to kind of talk about what he's looking at to do about, remember?
Yeah, I remember.
The front entrance.
The front entrance. So, front entrance changes. The greens are near healed, you know, the worst, the worst one now is actually, is actually 18. And if you kind of look down real close, there's still a lot of runners. I think in another 10 days or so, you're going to see that kind of, kind of mostly healed as well, right on those edges of 18. But 14 has come back really well, it looks great, and really so has, so has number nine, so it looks, they look a lot better.
Refresh my memory, the bathroom, or the additional bathroom complex, that's in his budget, right, coming up?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, do you know any timing on when you plan to attempt to do that?
I was going to have Drew speak on that in just a minute.
Yeah.
I'm going to have Drew speak on that in just a minute.
We've got some issues about putting it in scrub jay zone, I guess, and we'll have Drew talk about that.
He'll steal my thunder.
He'll steal my thunder, yeah.
Do you know when he'll be able to cut down the greens on deer? That's the biggest?
Well, they're already, the speed is already much, much faster. We've, we've really doubled the amount of primo that we're using, the growth regulator, so they're already running nine-plus right now. I think within, within, within a couple of weeks, they'll be back to the kind of normal speeds. They're, they're really, I mean, they're really pretty good already, so...
I hadn't been home in a week or so, so I don't...
No, they're, since we've kind of bumped up the primo, they've tightened up a whole lot, and they're, you know, less grain, a lot faster. So, yeah, if you just get on them today, you'll see, they're, they're already starting to speed up. But it's just that time of year where, where the growth patterns kind of change, and they're able, we're able to start getting fast. And we haven't had much rain and much water, and that certainly helps, too.
Your target speed is 10?
What, I'm sorry?
Your target speed? What do you intend for the greens to be, Stimples?
You know, I don't know where really he looks to have them. I think we've had them up to like 11, 11 and a half at times. That's about as fast as we can get them with, with our membership.
Right.
I mean, that's pretty fast.
Yeah.
And we have several greens that if we, that we have to worry about, that especially some of the greens that have really limited pin positions, that if we get the speeds any faster, they're, it just makes them penal and roll up greens. So we got to watch, and then, and then, you know, we don't want to have 16 greens rolling at 11, and then that one green, nine and a half, we don't want that either, so, so we, it's finding that happy medium.
I assume we're still planning to oversee Turtle?
Yes, sir.
I know that's a subject near and dear to our Canadian friends' heart.
Where Turtle, I don't know if he's ordered the seed yet, but we, it's, I'm actually working on the budget right now, the budget's gone, but I'm breaking it up into those monthly segments, and I've just actually been working on that, working on that the last couple of days. Thank you.
Okay, General Counsel, report.
President Branson, can I have Drew give a quick update on a couple of projects before we move on?
Sure. Thank you. I guess since we talked about the golf course bathroom last, we can start with that one. When we, we started looking at locations where we could put it on Turtle, and it's right there next to the pump station, is where they, where they want to put it, but I don't know if y'all have looked at any of the upland conservation maps that are around the whole Turtle, so pretty much anywhere that doesn't have golf course, mostly is upland conservation easement. There's a few areas that are blocked out that are not. The place, I guess the place that everyone would like to see it put, of course, is inside the easement, so we're looking at that, and we're also looking at some of the areas that's about 50 feet away. There is a block that we could stick it, but I guess it's not, I guess not, not as desirable to place it there, but we're going to get y'all maps of the two different locations and the two different versions of the bathroom for you to look at. Some of them, one of them has an area for the water fountain and ice machine, and the other one doesn't, so it just depends on how, how big you want to go with it, or how complex, or you just want two bathrooms and done.
We want to go with the $60,000 version.
Okay, well, that's...
That's what's in the budget.
Yeah, that's, it's, we're thinking it's going to be $4,000 to $5,000 difference between the building, if we give it room for the ice machine versus not, so...
Can you do it for 60 or less?
We're hoping it's going to be right there. It should be. There was a more complex bathroom recently built in Lake Placid, they were at $65,000. They didn't have, they had an extra overhang that we're not going to do, and they had two extra closets, so we're hoping that we should be right in that range.
We want a first-class bathroom, so everybody will be happy. That's all we want.
Well, everything in it's going to be first-class. We were just talking about not doing the extra, they had like a mop sink and everything in it, I don't know that we need that. I don't think any of the other bathrooms have anything like that.
None of the golfers I know do any mop work.
Well, it's, it's if you have maintenance staff that doesn't have their own stuff, but we're not, we're not including any of that, so that's why we're hoping it's going to come well under our budget.
So, but the two locations are somewhere between, what, 10 and 1? I mean, is that what, the general area we're at?
Isn't it 9?
18 and 10. Huh?
18 and 10. I mean, right around 18. It's, you know where the pump station is now?
Yeah.
Right there, right in that area, right there.
I think that'll be fine, right? You'll see it, you'll see it when you go to 1T, right? You'll see it.
You'll see it, but it's further, 12 miles.
Okay, but people will know it's there from the 1T.
Yes.
The thing was, to get them at 1, to get them at 9 and 10, to put the bathroom at 12.
There is going to be a pump station and a shelter.
Right, right there.
Yeah, it'll be either there, or it'll be...
Right by 9, right by 9. I mean, we can take it out there and show it to you, and that's the best thing to do. Now, we are trying to keep the budget down, we're going to do a lot of stuff in-house if we can, like the inside, we'll, we'll be doing the tile ourselves, because we want to match the...
I want to see quotes on the tile before you do that.
What do you want to see quotes of? The price of them?
I don't want to assume we can do it for less.
Well, you can do it for less if you do it in-house.
That's what you tell us, but I want to see quotes, I want to know that.
Fine.
We can, we can, if we want to, we can bid option out, the contractor doing all the work versus contractor billing the...
Right there, written in that area right there.
I think that'll be fine, right?
Well.
You'll see it, you'll see it when you go to 1T, right? You'll see it.
You'll see it, but it's further, 12 miles.
Okay, but people will know it's there from the 1T.
Yes.
The thing was, to get them at 1, to get them at 9 and 10, to put the bathroom.
There is a pump station and a shelter.
Right, right there.
Yeah, it'll be either there or it'll be.
Right by 9, right by 9. I mean, we can take it out there and show it to you, and that's the best thing to do. Now, we are trying to keep the budget down, we're going to do a lot of stuff in-house if we can, like the inside, we'll, we'll, we'll be doing the tile ourselves because we want to match the.
I want to see quotes on the tile before you do that.
What do you want to see quotes of?
I.
The price of them?
I don't want to assume we can do it for less.
Well, you can do it for less if you do it in-house.
That's what you tell us, but I want to see quotes, I want to know that.
Fine.
We can, we can, if we want to, we can bid option out, the contractor doing all the work versus contractor building a shell and then internally doing the rest. We can, we can handle all that when we put it out to bid.
That's fine, thank you.
And then, just explain if, the mitigation process and how long that could take.
If, if we choose not to put it in the area that's not in the conservation, if we put it in the conservation easement area, we have to go through FDEP and mitigate for the area we're going to impact in the conservation easement. And basing off the past, when we did other wetland mitigation, they're not the quickest when it comes to going through all the legal paperwork on their end. We're thinking it could take anywhere from six months to a year to just to do that. I'm just giving you a fair warning, where it, it just turns into a cluster dealing with DEP.
Compared to California, that's fast.
Yeah.
I, I think you did the right thing, I mean, you got to give us a couple of options and the majority of this board will decide, so you don't have to, I mean, it's nice to know a little stuff, there's no sense arguing until you give us the options.
Correct, and I believe we're planning on the next board meeting to have.
If that's okay.
Have the paperwork for you to look at and the different options.
The two, the two locations were 50 feet in reach earlier?
Well.
I mean, about.
Yeah, thereabouts. It's not, not too far away. I think a lot of it's between aesthetics and I don't know much more than that why it would be any different, but I don't play golf and I don't manage golf courses, so I don't, I don't have an opinion on that, so.
Sorry for you.
So we'll have that information when, the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
We'll make a decision? Okay?
I have one question, if you, if you don't have any more.
Oh, go ahead.
The intersection of Columbus, I think, no, yeah, Columbus and Ramona, I think it is.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be on our schedule for?
Drainage improvement?
Drainage, because that, it's just terrible there.
It's, it is on, it is on next year's list.
Good, good.
If at all possible, we're going to address it and do some improvements to it, and I believe, is it next year or the following year, there's also going to be some sidewalks put in in that area?
Good, good. Because I, I feel so bad when I think floods and all the people that go through that.
We were, we were trying, if we had money this year, we were going to try to do something with it, but we kind of ran out of budget, so.
Okay, that makes me feel better.
Would you like me to speak on the roads?
Roads, real quick, yeah.
Brief update on the roads. All of the other road projects are complete except for, I believe, striping, and they're going to be, they're going to be completing that hopefully soon. I have not-so-good news on Orion Drive. We tried to coordinate with the school to get the road temporarily closed so they could go on and pave it, but the principal basically told us, no way. He was worried about traffic backing up if we redirected it through Schumacher. So we're, right now, we're looking to postpone it. It's, it's right now, tentatively, we're looking at in November for Thanksgiving week when the school's closed. We were hoping we could get it done before that, but it just, it didn't work out with the school traffic. I think that's about it for right now.
Yeah, I just questioned, the school principal can do that?
I mean. It's, as far as just, I mean, as a courtesy, if it's, I understand what his position is, is that, you know, it's.
Well, I understand it too, but we'd like to get a road done.
Yeah, I mean, in all, realistically, no, I mean, he doesn't.
Okay, good, that's.
Yeah, I think we didn't want to cause any political issues anywhere, so.
God forbid, God forbid.
I'm not saying anything. If he was paying for it, I'd be more happy with him deciding when it was going to be done, if they were making any contribution.
I see Patricia's here, Sue.
Okay. Would you like for her to go ahead and start her presentation?
Yeah, let's go ahead and get her presentation on here.
Thank you.
You have a beautiful community. And there are a lot of things that are already in its favor. It was built in a rather unique time. In many of the communities that I work in, the, the roadways are built with curb and gutter, but they're all 24 feet to 28 to 32 feet wide. And at that point, there's very little that I can do, because the roadways are so wide, people are going to do what they're going to do. Here, in, one of the major advantages you have is actually that your roadways are very narrow, and I would be recommending that if it weren't for the fact that you already have them. And that is a huge benefit. The combination, our traffic calming is the combination of physical measures that reduce the negative effects of motor vehicle use, alter driver behavior, and improve conditions for non-motorized street users. So we'd really like to get things done like improved quality of life, we'd like to get your residents comfortable with how people are driving in the area, we want you to make your streets safe and attractive and, and remove all the negative impacts from cars. But we also want to get people out of those cars and onto bikes and walking around because that creates community. So we go at slower car speeds, can't get people off of their bike or out of their cars until it's a safe place to do that. I don't think you have any real collision incidences that are of major concern, please let me know if there are places you're concerned about that, but I didn't see anything that would indicate to me that you should have a concern there. Of course, safety for bikes and walkers, and we want to reduce cut-through. Traffic calming is a, is very much a sensory issue. You can see the difference even in these two streets. The, the one up, oh, sorry, let's see if we can find, no pointer, oh, yep, it's pointer. This is Ponce de Leon near the north end, and this is over on Sunshine, not far from here. And you can see that the character between the two of them is very different. I, I would argue that this looks like a racetrack and this looks like a neighborhood. The goal is neighborhood, not racetrack. Sound makes a big difference. Sometimes you can add things into the environment that will make sound as you move over them, like these rumble strips, or the rumble strips that segregate the bike lane from the roadway. Balance, you may not even think about it, but as you go around the curve, you can feel that, and the, the curve itself actually gives you a balance input that encourages slower speeds. Sight, okay, so these are fun, the, these are actually painted on the ground, they look three-dimensional, they're not. This is actually in Asia where they took some of the gaming little tokens and they, they made them 3D on the ground so that it makes the lane look narrow. And culturally, that's something that, that they're familiar with, and so it connected well with them. This here is not a little girl, it's actually on the pavement. And, and those kinds of optical illusions can make a big difference as people come up to them. And the interesting thing is that they, they are persistent over time. So a lot of people get used to an environment and adjust to it, and then their behavior goes back to what it was before. Because these are optical illusions, you don't really get used to them. Every time you see these triangles, it looks like there's triangles sitting up in the road that you're going to be running over, and it takes a second to, to readjust to that. Your brain will actually still see that. It's a social issue. A lot of times, social pressure can make more of a difference than, than a lot of other things. I know that sounds very vague, but that there is data, at least anecdotally so far, that, that having community pressure, where people actually talk to each other about, this is a place where we like to walk or bike, and so we'd like you to slow down, we'd like you to cooperate with that. Those kinds of things in a friendly way can make a huge difference. Building community is also a part of traffic calming. So when you know the people that you're driving by, when you know the area that you're driving by and the people that live there, it impacts the way you drive. I remember driving into, I am the worst driver you will ever meet. This is why I do this work, if it works on me, it'll work on anybody. And so, you know, in my own neighborhood, there are times that I'm busy and I'll, I'll come screaming around the corner, and one day, as I was doing that, one of my neighbors came up to me very gently and said, wow, that was a little fast. And I went, oh, oops, I'm sorry. And, and now every time I go around that corner, I remember that somebody said, wow, that was a little fast, and I actually do change my behavior because of that memory. So sometimes just having a memory to connect people together that is tied to, we want to behave a different way, is enough to change people's behavior. And that's what we're talking about, we're talking about changing people's behavior. In terms of speeding, we, we took counts at seven different locations in the community. There were some issues at Ponce de Leon and Orunda, as you saw in that very first slide where we, where I showed you the visual difference. You can see why the 85th percentile speed is about 11 miles an hour over the speed limit. Would you think of that roadway as a 30 mile an hour roadway if you were just driving around a community? It doesn't look like a 30 mile an hour roadway, so people drive a lot faster. But the, the troubling one is down on Orunda where it's a 25 mile an hour roadway, but the 85th percentile speed, which is what we use, is 38 miles an hour, which is a lot faster than it's posted and probably a lot faster than it needs to be. It's a neighborhood, people need to be driving there like a neighborhood, not, you know, in a hurry. There are some minor issues at Granada and Matanzas where you're, you're up at 5.6, maybe 6.0 on Sunrise, you know, they're, they're a little higher than you would like, but not, not as high as they could be. So this is the, the place where we took the count on Ponce de Leon, obviously, that's not a 30, that's not a 30 mile an hour roadway, and I have a recommendation for that. Orunda, this is, this is a neighborhood street, but as you can see, it's a long way to the houses and, and there's not anything close to the roadway, so it looks more like a 35 mile an hour street, which is the speed that we're actually seeing in the roadway. Granada, this is the same area where we took the count, and as you can see, the buildings are way back here, there's not really any trees that are close to the road, you have a multi-use path, that's a good thing, but that's probably a little faster going down that street than I would prefer. Matanzas, this is still a super, super narrow roadway, but again, everything's set back pretty far. So we're going to talk about toolkits. These are the tools that I have available to me that we could use to make changes in behavior. One of the big ones that you're going to have to think about as board is local enforcement, not just having the police come in, because obviously, they can do that, but there is the possibility of doing enforcement through Sun and Lake itself. Now, you may not be able to enforce anything other than your own residence, so if somebody comes in and visits, visits one of your residents, you probably don't have any control over that. But for your own residents, you can actually make a provision within your own codes that say speeding is inappropriate and it's an HOA violation, not a criminal offense, an HOA violation. And because it's an HOA violation, if we catch you doing it with a speed sign and we have your license plate registered with us and we know that it's you, we're going to send you a violation notice, maybe a warning the first time, but a violation notice with a fine attached to it. So that's not the kind of thing that you can actually give, you know, a fine to someone who doesn't live here. But if you've got a photograph that says, okay, you are clocked going this speed in your neighborhood, you can find that. You're well within your rights to do so. Now, these run $3,000 to $4,000 for, now, what, now, excuse me, $12,000 for the machine, and then it actually has cameras on it. Normally, it would actually show, sorry, it would show a speed there. Occasionally, that one will actually show a frowny face, which, you know, I think is actually a little more compelling personally. We're not even going to tell you how fast you're going, but we don't like it.
We're going to give you citation.
Yeah. Here, you're getting something in the mail. Always stop signs have been used, there's one up here at Sunshine and Edgewater. I wouldn't take it out, I don't recommend doing it as a practice. It makes people not stop for stop signs. You know, that's just part of the way things work. Now, putting up a yield sign in a place where things are getting a little out of hand may not be a bad idea, but putting up stop signs without having volume that needs it tends to, to lower compliance across the board. And we want to put things where they're needed and not put them when they're not, so that people actually take them seriously. The vertical deflection, this is what everybody thinks about when they think about traffic calming. There's obviously several different types. Speed bumps are the, the little ones that you put in a parking lot. Speed humps are like the temporary ones that you have around the neighborhood. They're 10 to 12 feet wide and about 2 to 4 inches tall, and they're a hump. A speed table has a flat top that's large enough that you can get both wheels on the top of it, so it's an up and then a down, not just an up and down. The disadvantage to these, and, and there are many, is that this is messing with the laws of physics. And when you're messing with the laws of physics, that means that everybody's messing with the laws of physics. So if you need to get an ambulance over a speed hump, you're going to lose 6 seconds at least for every single one of them. And you, they only really work when you put them in series. You have to put them about every 5 to 700 feet for them to actually do their job. And then, at that point, you have 10 or 12 of them, and you're not looking at 6 seconds, you're looking at 60 seconds. An EMS doesn't tend to prefer that. I don't tend to prefer that. The, the issue I have with them is largely that when you put speed humps, people will slow down to 20 miles an hour over the hump, and then they speed up in between. And they're not anymore aware, they're not, it works, it's extremely effective, there are places that I do recommend it. Out here in front of this is one of them. But they only really work right where they're located. So in a place where you're going to put them, if you want that one spot to slow down, that's good. If, if you're trying to get an entire area, you're going to have to use so many of them that you're going to have problems. Horizontal deflection works a little better. So if you can move the roadway left and right, so instead of having the roadway go straight through, it actually moves it a full lane width to there to the north. When you can move traffic left and right and give people something visual to interrupt that, that makes a bigger difference. It doesn't interfere with EMS response because they'll take the middle of the road, no big deal. But it does tend to slow down the rest of it. System changes, I, I included in the report about a half a dozen different type of system changes. This is really the only one that may be appropriate for Sun and Lake, and this was such a gorgeous picture, it's really hard to pass up. This one's called a yield street, and if you've got a lot of cut-through traffic in a residential neighborhood where you've got houses on both sides and there's a lot of people going through, it's a good idea to go ahead and narrow that down to one lane, put a stop sign on both ends, because then that gives people, first of all, it's, it's like an entry feature, it shows people that you're coming into a different environment. And second, it, it makes people wait for each other, it narrows things down even farther than it is now, and that can actually make a big difference. I do have a recommendation for one of these in one location. Perceptual devices, anything that hits your perception makes a big difference. So you can have islands that narrow the street. So you can have islands that narrow the street width. You can have road diets. You don't need road diets, you already have road diets. Tactile treatments. As you go over those treatments, you actually, it makes a sound. And that gives you an input that you're going to, that you need to be aware of what's going on. Interestingly enough, there are actually roadways here in the U.S. and in Japan that have rumble strips that make music. I know, it's just the most bizarre thing. You drive over a section of Route 66 and it plays "America the Beautiful," which is as cool as anything. I don't know how you would actually physically do that, but I'd really love to know. These, again, are three-dimensional, these are just paint. They're not actually three-dimensional. They're just painted on the ground, but they look three-dimensional when you come up to them. Canopy trees. You know, there is, I cannot emphasize enough how important canopy trees are to the way people behave. When you see canopy trees, particularly close to the roadway, it makes a huge difference. And there are actually ways to build that, and I'll talk with your site engineer, about how you can actually plant them in the ground so that they don't dig up your sidewalks, so that they don't dig up your roadway. There are actually methods you can use that'll do that. Marketing. This is underutilized. People don't often think about marketing. You pick a campaign. These were actually used in Portland as street signs in the front of people's yards. Signs like this, "Slow down, you're almost home." Really, it's okay, no hurry anymore. This is a campaign that's been around the world. The speed limit may be 25, but 20 is plenty. And that's the kind of thing that you can actually put on every single piece of paper that you send out as a reminder that this is a place where we'd really like people to be a little slower. Let's take it in a more relaxed way. Educational pieces like this one. If you're hit by a vehicle traveling at 20 miles an hour, you've got a 1 in 10 chance of dying. If you're hit at 30, it's a 50/50. If you're hit at 40, you've got a 1 in 10 chance of living. That's a big deal. And when people start seeing that kind of information, sometimes, in the moment, it doesn't make as big a difference, but it begins to change their perception of their behavior. Neighborhood branding. Now, this is a technique that is relatively new. We're expecting to see reports on this out of Portland in the next six to eight weeks on actual statistics. They've actually done some of these. This one's from Fort Lauderdale. There's not actually a lot of hard data on it yet, but it becomes a community rallying point. And essentially, what happens is that you get the group together in a place like this. You get the people that are on an individual street together to come up with an idea for what they would like to see as a brand, as a picture that represents their individual street, their individual neighborhood. And then, once that design is finalized and approved by the board, obviously, they actually go out and paint it themselves. They have a block party. And that does two things. First of all, it's surprising in the environment. You can see how these are not what you would expect to see in a normal situation. And so the surprise alone is an important part of the treatment. But the party is an important part of the treatment too, because then you begin to see your neighbors. You know your neighbors. You know where you're driving. And you know that there's a group of people there that are going to be watching you and watching out for you. And it creates a really positive experience between the people that translates into people's everyday behavior. If you know the guy three doors down from you has a middle schooler who might be out on his bike, you're looking for the middle schooler out on his bike on your way home to make sure that you're not going to hit him, because you know the kid. And that makes a difference. Tactical urbanism. I would recommend for anything that you think of as a solution, first try it out. This is actually chalk. So people actually decided they wanted to have a traffic circle in this area, and so they put the entire design down in chalk. They put the barriers up around it just to see what it was like for a few days. You know, it lasts until it rains. And they just try it out and see if that's actually going to be something that functionally works for them. If it works, great. If it doesn't, they haven't really spent any money to speak of. And you can fix it. You can tweak it. You can change it as you go. So let's talk about specific recommendations. No, they're not going to all be this boring, but it's hard to talk about this. Or it's hard to have a picture for this. Land use change on Ponce de Leon may actually make the biggest difference. Ponce de Leon is not really the kind of roadway that, how do I put this delicately? I don't think I want to be backing out from my driveway onto that. There are people that do. There are houses that are there. But this is one of the main entrances into the north side of the area. And that north area probably could benefit from some additional commercial, especially as the neighborhood grows. So looking at the parcels that are up particularly north of where the existing housing is on Ponce de Leon, looking at maybe using that as offices, house-scale office buildings. You know, how in some traditional downtown areas, you'll have these historic homes that get converted to offices. There's no good reason not to just have a beautiful office built that will take up, you know, a house-sized space. There are the intersections up there by those neighborhoods. There's a couple of intersections that probably can be realigned so that you're actually doing a sideways movement. I'll show you what that looks like in a second. The other thing, excuse me, I'm sorry. Remove the speed table in the forest, because I'm not sure what benefit you're getting from that. Because it makes more sense outside of those residential neighborhoods to actually just change the speed limit. It doesn't make sense to have it posted at 30 miles an hour when there's nothing on it. And it makes more sense to go ahead and change it to the speed that people are actually driving. But down at the school and at the hospital, it probably needs some raised crosswalks just to make sure people are more aware as people cross the road to get over to that multi-use path, because if I remember correctly, it's on the east side of the roadway. So the school's on the west side and the multi-use path is on the east side. So as they're crossing to get over there, they need to be very visible. So having a raised crosswalk that acts as a speed table and is super visible would be really helpful. Edgewater Drive. And this is what a raised crosswalk looks like, by the way. So right here, I would recommend raised crosswalks here, right in front of the entrance, right where the intersection is. And then also at the end, anywhere, at the end of this property, anywhere where people might be crossing over, maybe to walk down here from other neighborhoods, making sure that you actually have something super visible so people can see them as they're crossing. At the curve, particularly going north around the curve, since you've got golf cart traffic on the other side, I would go ahead and do the three-dimensional triangles. These, again, are paint. So they're not difficult to install, and they're not actually that hard to design. Menorca, of course, has nothing on it right now. So, you know, I didn't actually do a traffic speed count up there because it's, there's not enough up there. But this is what an intersection realignment looks like. This is a strategy that I think could be used a lot of places. And they basically take the intersection and move it into where the cross street is, just back it off about a lane so that you're running, so that you actually can see that this is a place, not a through path. It's beginning to degrade significantly, so when somebody comes in to develop that area, that probably needs to be reconstructed. Columbus Boulevard. This one's the hard one. Out of all of the places in this community, this is the one that's going to be the most I would recommend that you do some intersection realignments similar to what this shows in a couple of spots on the northern section where you've got some of those intersections up there, and you can do that. You've got a multi-use trail, but your multi-use trails here in the neighborhood are consistent with 1974, of course. They're five or six feet wide. You probably need to widen those out to about 10 to 12 feet wide. And I really liked this treatment, where you actually have sort of, it's not an ugly barrier, but it's enough visually that you can see there's something going on. Columbus is just really straight. And unfortunately, I'm not really sure that you could do much other than the speed tables that you already have and maybe one or two more. There's a couple of three-dimensional crosswalks you could put in to try to slow some people down. Getting trees up closer to the roadway is going to make a big difference. It just looks too long and straight. It looks like a raceway. And that's the biggest strategies, those are the strategies that need to be approached. Granada. There are sidewalks on one side of most of Granada, but they probably need to have sidewalks on both sides. And I'd like to see intersection realignments where the streets are in a row at about every other street and traffic circles at a couple of the major streets. And the reason for that is because the traffic circles move people even farther than just the intersection realignments and get people to slow down. And then this is an ideal location for the community branding efforts, because you've got a very cohesive group of people that are all in the same place. Orunda, same thing. Orunda is one of the places where there's the most speeding. So sidewalks, no sidewalks down there at all. And that's problematic. You can do some intersection realignments. You can actually do that. You see, this is actually a tactical urbanism strategy. Somebody took all of the leaves that were hanging out in the gutter and sort of did a chalk line. I'm pretty sure that's actually either light paint or chalk and took the leaves and scattered them up just to see what it would be like if they realigned it. And they liked it so much that they built it. And it's a good strategy to try something out. If it's not going to work, find out pretty quickly. If it is going to work, that's good news, and you can actually make it more permanent. Cortez. Cortez is largely undeveloped right now, but it won't stay that way. So intersection realignments at a couple places and traffic circles at a couple places. You're going to have to watch this one carefully because it could easily end up a lot like Columbus. Cantoria. This is the place where I think a yield street would really be useful. Cantoria is one of the major cut-throughs from Orunda up to Granada. And so a traffic circle on the north, maybe even on the south, although a traffic circle on the south doesn't help as much as it does on the north, and a yield street. And definitely, take advantage of the extra area to do some plantings right where the yield street is. Cremona, that's that neighbor, that's your street, right, Neil?
Nearby, yeah.
Yeah. You're probably going to have to break down and do rumble strips there. I know that's not, I don't like that option, but I don't know that there's that many other options. Three-dimensional warnings coming into those curves would be a huge help. But unfortunately, it's just, there's not an awful lot that you can do there. The curves are already very, very sharp. I can't make them any sharper. So those are the kinds of things that you're going to have to do to get people to actually pay attention to those curves.
While you're on that, one of the things we talked about was possibly turning one of those curves into an actual intersection with stop signs. You said you don't like stop signs.
Well, not unless you need them. If you need a stop sign, you put a stop sign. But if there's not cross-street traffic...
It's just, people cut that curve.
Well, they do, I'm sure. The other thing that can be done is to actually, I've seen a couple of treatments where you can put, it looks, I'm sorry, it looks like a slug, almost. You know, it's a bump that looks about like this, and it's about this wide. You can put those in between the lanes so that they're not taking it wider than they should, you know, to try to keep them, "Please stay in your own lane" kind of thing. That will actually help tremendously, because if they have to stay in their own lane, it's such a tight curve that you're going to have a hard time moving out. They'll have to slow down. So if you're staying in your own lane and you're taking that curve, you're going to have to go 20 miles an hour. You don't really get a choice. This is a flow chart for requesting traffic calming. One of the biggest things that Tanya asked for was a process, not just that they would have, you know, I would come in and tell you what you need to do, but that you would have a process so that you know what to do in the future. And as a part of this process, you need to have a request system. So in the report, I gave you some sample forms that residents could fill out to request specific traffic calming strategies. I also included at the end of the report, a menu of traffic strategies that would help them understand what works and what doesn't work, and why it works and why it doesn't work. The goal is for them to actually come to you and tell you what the problem is and tell you what they think the solution is. Should be the very last page, actually. Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
The goal is for them to tell you what they see the problem is, and then have them suggest a solution as well. You can actually go through and analyze to see if the problem is just perceived or if the problem is real and needs to be addressed. The board can bring a request on their own. They don't need, the requests from residents, I would prefer to see if they're going to make a request, I would like to see that request from multiple house holds. So the way the form is set up right now, they'd have to have signatures from 10 of their neighbors, because it's not just them that's going to have to live with whatever correction, they're going to have to have their neighbors living with it too. So I'd like to see at least 10 signatures if a resident wants to come in and ask for something. A board can bring in a request, any of the board members could bring in a request without the signatures, because you represent the people that are in your communities. The form requires both a description of the issue that they're having now and a recommended solution. And that's why we included in that set of forms, the menu of options that are available and a description of when it works and when it doesn't work. Does that make sense? So we're actually training them. These are the things that you can actually do that will make this better, and these are the places that this works well, and these are the places this doesn't work well. And so they can take that into consideration as they're making recommendations. And I would recommend that the community go through and start doing individual street branding programs, you know, clustered neighborhood branding programs consistently over time. You find a neighborhood that really wants to do it first, and then get them together and maybe do one a year or two a year or one a quarter. And that'll get some community cohesiveness as well. It's a huge selling point for a community to say, "Hey, we actually not only have a great place to live, but our neighbors know each other and they care about each other. And we've actually gotten together to really think about what, who we are as a people. And we'd love you to come join us because we'll get to know you too." And connection is one of those things right now in our society. We're socially connected on media all the time. Those face-to-face connections are invaluable, and they're harder to come by. So I think that was it. I know you have questions. I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Look, in that the curb slug isn't one of the options you gave here, I'm assuming there are options that are not in this list.
There are.
Get creative.
There are. And if, those are the kinds of things that the technology is changing so rapidly, it's one of those things that if somebody goes on and looks at traffic calming around the world, things have been very rapidly changing, and it's actually a really neat thing to see. There are a lot of communities where, particularly in very urban environments where they have very tight spacing, where they've actually taken roadway away from cars entirely. Not that they don't let cars go through there, but the majority of the space is actually given back to pedestrians and bikes instead of the cars, so that it's treated more like a community space. You actually get the roadway back almost as a park. Now, it would take a lot of work to get to Now, it would take a lot of work to get to that, but that's not something that's actually out of the question. Places like Montezos, you could actually have yield street areas where you could get huge sections of that roadway back as park space or as neighborhood space. And you just narrow it down to one lane and people have to actually pass by each other and wait for each other to do that. It's the kind of thing that slows people down dramatically. But the question is, how aggressive do you want to get about this? And how much do you want to have your community in that kind of culture? The other thing I would recommend, and I don't know if I made it... I thought about it. I don't know if it made it into the report, was the idea of creating a trail system that runs throughout the community that is actually something that you mark and brand and include as a part of your overall marketing materials. This is... We have this interconnected trail system. It's a huge selling point these days in terms of development. A lot of developers are putting them in voluntarily because people want to be more active. They want to be more connected. And they want to have not just recreational trails, but trails that go somewhere where they can actually do things. Other questions?
I got one. In your speed analysis, how long did that... How long a period did you actually test the roads?
Those counts were done for... It's either 24 or 48 hours.
Oh, two days? Okay.
Yeah. So you actually put the... I don't remember if they did hoses or... I think they did hoses. You actually lay the hoses out one day and then you come back and give them either the next day or the third day.
At what time of the year was that conducted?
It was just recently.
So during the summer?
It was over the summer. So the speeding should actually be a little higher than you would see in the fall when you've got the snowbirds back.
You haven't seen them drive from Canadian.
All right, fine. I have not. The volumes would be lower.
And they drink.
And they drink. And they drink.
Is there any grant money for any of this work?
I'm not sure. I think there may actually be, not necessarily for...
I couldn't hear the question, Mike.
He asked if there was any grant money available for this kind of thing.
Sorry?
It is a good question. I need money. We would all like money. There may be money for if you wanted to have an area, say on the north end of Ponce de Leon or down closer to the hospital, that you want to treat more like a downtown and outfit more like a downtown, there may be streetscape money for that. As far as residential streets go, normal, everyday streets, I don't know of any. That doesn't mean there's not, but I don't know of any.
Would you comment on... It seems to me that we caused part of the problem on Montezos by putting the speed bumps in on Grenada because that's a cut-through.
It might very well be.
And when we did that back in the day, then we put them on there. Now we've got another one on Grenada. So now we've got four involved and we got another petition. They want another one on Montezos. I mean, it just never ends. And the ones we're putting in, it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit with a 10 mile an hour speed bump, we're going to get somebody killed.
Well, I don't know that you'll get anybody... Well, depends on how many you put in. You could get people killed if you have too many of them because...
Or too aggressive ones. That's... I guess that's my point. You're putting in a speed bump that slows people down less than half of the speed bump.
A lot, yeah. And it's... You're right. When you put them on Grenada, they are going to try to use Montezos as a cut-through. That's not good for the people who are in Kansas, so...
That's also one of the reasons you got to cut through on Cantoria.
Right.
Because Ortega is slow because it's curvy and it was designed that way.
And it's supposed to be that way.
Cantoria is a straight...
Well, and the other thing is that Cantor...
It's called the law of unintended consequences. You know, you do the right thing and it causes something that isn't right.
You could probably... Because there's nothing on Ortega, there's no driveways, there's no intersections to speak of, and your multi-use path is well back from the roadway, you could actually increase the speed limit on Ortega and that might cut down some of the issues on Cantoria.
If you took out the four-way stop, it would help as well.
You're going to need the four-way stop because I really... Because of the kids.
At Orion?
At Orion. Because the kids are actually using that or should be using that to go to school. So that's one of the places where I would actually say certainly don't take it out, but largely because of the kids. And almost, I would make sure that you have a very, very visible crosswalk down at the end of the intersection. But again, it's an intersection, so, you know, you can give them a little more speed, you know, maybe go up to 40 miles an hour or 35 miles an hour on Ortega, knowing that they've got a stop sign at the end. And then maybe they'll see that as a little more attractive than going through Cantoria. Just because I'm not a huge advocate of doing slow for slow's sake. If you've got something to worry about hitting or someone to worry about hitting, then I want you to go... I want you to get out and push. Sorry. That may be a stretch, but you see what I mean. But if there's nobody on the roadway and there's no driveways, then there's no reason to slow them down.
Another issue for me at least would be what's the cost of putting in all these circles that we're talking about? We're talking millions of dollars if you're looking at all of this stuff.
If you're looking at all of it, it's probably... My guess would be somewhere in the neighborhood of a quarter of a million, but it doesn't have to happen overnight either. These are the kinds of things that you could do year by year by year by year in terms of priority.
Changing an intersection to a circle would be...
Well, okay. So part of the reason why I made some of those recommendations is because some of those roadways you're going to have to resurface anyway. And you don't necessarily go out and do a traffic circle or do an intersection realignment just for doing it. When you go to reconstruct the roadway or repave that roadway because it needs it, then you do it. And then it becomes a part of your normal maintenance. So it's not something that you absolutely have to do today. It's something that will ultimately help. The other thing is that some of these temporary installations can become... You can do a temporary installation that ultimately you do later as permanent. One of the things that I've seen over the last few years is that they take these 100-gallon tree... Trees in a 100-gallon bucket, basically. And they'll put them out in the street with a little bit of irrigation and use that as a temporary installation to see what happens. Because first of all, you can't see through it. There's a tree there. And second of all, you have to drive around it. And in one of those cross-street intersections like on Grenada, if you do that right where the intersection is, then all of the traffic basically moves around it into where the existing intersection is and then comes back. That breaks up the sightline, so you're not seeing as far down the road and it doesn't look as open. And that kind of temporary installation can become something permanent, but it doesn't have to do that in a hurry. You don't have to make those things happen now. Some of this are the kind of things, for instance, let me back up. I'll show you what... Like here. You see these pots and these kinds of things where the... This is actually a parking day. There actually is a parking day. It was actually last week. In a lot of cities, there's a one day of the year that tactical urbanists have set aside, they call it parking day. And they will take metered spaces like this one and they'll feed the meter for the day and then they turn it into a park. And just to show what it looks like to take some of that parking back, that we don't need quite this much parking, what if we turned it into a park? And I've seen people actually use them as offices where they just sit there all day long and work. It's cheaper than office space. A lot cheaper than office space. But those are the kinds of things that depending on the way that you put them in, you can do it very inexpensively just to see what it looks like and see how it feels. And if they love it, then they can either find funds to do a bond for that over the length of time for that neighborhood if they love it that much. Or you wait until you have to reconstruct the roadway and then you put it in permanently when the roadway gets reconstructed.
I'm not sure why any of that would work, Karen.
Do we have... I have a question. Do we have the ability to change the speed signs on any road?
Yeah. The only road we don't control is Sunning Lake Boulevard. So the only road we do not control is Sunning Lake Boulevard. All the rest of the roads in the district...
So we don't have to go through the county to change? We can just do it on our own?
No. The ones that I've recommended, you've already done the speed study for?
No, I was just curious in general if it came up, if we could just do it on our own.
Yeah.
One of the concerns that came up in the local paper this past week was whether or not there are legal issues involved with the slowing down the speed control systems. The county is looking into that. I don't know what the impacts are to what we are trying to do. That was one of the...
What legal issues were they concerned about?
I'm not sure. They didn't go into detail in the article.
Send me the article when you get a minute.
Specifically, it was specifically that if you change this, change something in order to try to make it better, you might give up some of your municipal immunity.
Well, okay, so...
That's what they were talking about.
And I understand the concern. Often, local jurisdictions are given the right to change their speed limit signs if they feel like the speed that it's posted at is unsafe for any reason. So if you're in the middle of downtown New York City and the roadway geometry says they should be able to drive 55 miles an hour, they're not posting it at that because it's not safe. There's too many pedestrians. They're going to post it at 25. I prefer personally to make sure that the roadway tells the user without a sign what they're supposed to do. If the roadway is very clear to the user what is expected of them, then the signs are nice and they help, but it's not a big deal. If you post it something significantly lower than what the roadway says they need to go, compliance falls through the floor. You just... People don't obey them. And you can see that on Ponce de Leon. That's why the speeds are so much higher because the roadway says this should be 55 or something similar because it's out in the middle of nowhere.
I think that's absolutely true. And it also applies to the stop sign issue that when you make multiple four-way stops, three-way stops, then people look at that and say, well, that's stupid. I'm not doing that and I'm not doing this one over here either. So when you make a dumb rule, everybody quits following all the rules.
That's true. And I... That's why I prefer to see things that will actually change sort of the nature of the community. The other thing is that there are a lot of places you don't have sidewalks. And you probably need to budget in a certain number of feet a year. Prioritize it. Keep an eye out for where you see kids biking in particular and, you know, just allow yourself a certain number of feet per year. I did actually check the right-of-way widths on a lot of the roads and there is right-of-way to be able to put some sidewalks in without interrupting the swale drainage. It's going to get close to the houses and you're going to have to probably deal with some complaints on that because all of a sudden you've got a sidewalk in somebody's front yard. But it is actually right-of-way. It's not legally property. And it's for the benefit of the community, not just an individual person.
You're talking about more millions of dollars.
When you did the study, were you... Did you do a study of the total Sunning Lake property or were you directed in certain areas?
I had a list of 10 roadways that I was looking at. I did drive through the majority of the community. There were some neighborhood streets that I didn't go on, but I did look through the whole community as a whole, not just the 10 roadways that they listed.
So if you did all of Sunning Lake, there would be more than 10 recommendations that you've given us, probably, correct?
Probably. But again, a lot of these things are the kinds of things that you wait... First of all, you wait till somebody complains and then you see what you have in the budget. And second of all, if you can do it as you go, you do it as you go. Don't try to do all of it at once. Frankly, your numbers are just not high enough to justify spending a quarter of a million dollars right now. I'm going back to those speed numbers.
That's true.
Yeah. No, you don't have to do this today. I would like to see if I were to prioritize something, I'd like to see you do something on Orunda fairly soon just because I know there's more likelihood that you're going to have kids down on that street. And that's a lot higher than it's posted.
Are you talking about Orduna? I don't know where Orunda is.
Yeah, Orduna.
Yeah. It's way down on the south side. It's one of the southern roads that feeds directly into the school.
Okay. That's Orduna.
Yeah, Orduna.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to say it wrong.
You left out the "D."
Just got it in place.
Orduna, I'm sorry.
So let me answer your question. Most of our complaints, because we have gotten seven complaints from some of these block areas, maybe called communities out there, are your typical street like the Kansas where there's... Where the people are complaining that cars are running up and down the street at a high rate of speed.
Right.
And those streets are already developed. There's homes on both sides. Some have sidewalks, some don't have sidewalks. So there's really very little options. We can't really move things around or do anything like that. What do you recommend for situations like that? Because that's really what we've been dealing with.
The first recommendation... Remember that first in the toolkit?
Yeah. That's only 12 grand.
Yeah. And it's not expensive at all and you can probably get an awful lot of that nipped in the bud quickly. It's a fast, it's an easy solution. You don't have to...
Compare that to a speed bump. How big an area, like if you're on a street like...
You move it.
Huh?
You move it.
Oh, you move it around.
Yeah. You don't put one in one place. You take them all over. You get a complaint, you stick it there.
Okay. So that's one option for...
It's an option.
Is there any other options? Any opinions?
We're already using enforcement.
Yeah. But this will take you to a... The police can only be so many places at once. And this granted will only be so many places at once, but you can move this around.
We have three neighborhoods that we have to respond to that have asked us for help.
Help.
I'll say help. They've asked us for...
No, help is there.
They've asked us for help because of speeding on their blocks. And they have given us petitions.
Right.
And there are excessive 10 names. I mean, there are like 20 or 25 names. And we owe them an answer. So I guess what I'm asking you is if the situation is like Edgewater or Montezos or whatever, is that the best option? And if not, what's a backup option?
I think that's a good start. I think over time, you probably need to look at some additional options. You can take away some right-of-way even beyond what you have... The yield street idea might actually be a very aggressive solution for Montezos, particularly since you're getting a lot of cut-through.
These are not cut-through. These are people just speeding in front of homes.
Yeah. But if you make it so you've got the yield situation where you're stopping people while cars come through, then you're really...
That's even slower than a speed bump.
You're making a narrow two-lane road a one-lane road. So you've got to stop here while they come by you and then you can go.
Oh, you're suggesting that?
Why not?
Will you be here to answer the questions of the...
If you want me to...
Other concerns on the residents?
Well, okay. So the question is, do you want... The question is, do you want the solution? Is this a big enough problem that you're willing to go to this?
Well, to the people who sent the petition, it's a serious problem.
Well, the people that are not in that street, that are not living there and they're speeding through that roadway and they're going to complain, it's not their house.
They don't do it anymore because we put speed bumps in. It'll shiver your timbers when you go over them.
Exactly. And my view is this is a better alternative than speed bumps.
I think it's a far better alternative. And you can get some space back for some other things, too.
Okay.
I just want to say quickly... I just... I say quickly, when I was a kid, I used to ride with my dad. And I'd say, Dad, why are you going this way? He said, "Well, there's three less stop signs." And I went...
Really?
I looked at my dad and I goes, "Man, you've got a problem."
But it's, that's the way people drive.
People do that. I've actually heard people do that.
I do that.
And my only concern is I want the speeding stopped. I see it. I don't care if we put speed bumps every five feet, but people in this community need to have not somebody going 40 mile an hour. And I don't care if they wreck their car going, they're doing it once. But what we need is to get it stopped, one way or the other.
Well, and I agree. The question is, how aggressive do you want to be about that? And how much, how much political will is available? And money for that matter. I mean, you can throw money at this all day long. I'm not sure there's going to be a huge amount of solutions to it because in large part, there are speeding issues, but they're not so fast that I would say you just need to throw, you need to fix this like yesterday. Except Oruna. You probably need to fix that yesterday. But other than that, I just, the problems are not as bad as they could be. So they're kinds of things you could fix over time.
Just so you know, the residents think they're bad.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Well, agreed.
I'm not going to tell a resident that they're wrong.
Yeah, me neither.
There's no high traffic on your block. I don't live there.
Right.
Well, no, and I agree. But at the same time, the question is, how serious is it to you? The other, the other thing to ask them is, I have this list of solutions and give them a budget for how much it costs. And is it worth this much to you?
I don't think they care about the cost. They just want it fixed. I mean, seriously.
No, no, I mean, that they would be paying as an additional fee on top of their current fees.
Well, I need you at this meeting.
You see what I mean, though? I mean, at the bottom, at the bottom of the question is, okay, so, so right now, the numbers are within the range of what is acceptable for what's posted, okay? And we could lower the posting, but it's not really going to change the speeds. People don't pay attention to signs. I don't pay attention to signs. I will give you that right now. If it is a biggest enough concern to the residents that live on that street and they are willing to get every single person on that street to commit to paying $2,000 or $3,000 a year to pay for an improvement in addition to what they already pay, then that is the kind of problem that you probably need to participate in. But you don't have to pay all of because you can get to that eventually, but you may not be able to fix that right away.
We tried to raise their assessments $10.
I know.
I can't tell you what happened over that. And you're talking $2,000?
Well, but you see what I mean.
That's one of the advantages of the movable sign, though, is because then it can be paid for by the offenders.
Okay, if we can...
There are rumble strips.
Rumble strips.
How far can you put them apart?
There are several different designs for them.
Say like Columbus or Cremona, okay? You put them 20 feet apart, 50 feet apart? What's, I mean, there must be...
Well, on Cantoria, it's going to make, or not Cantoria, what is the name?
Cremona?
Yes. That makes a lot of sense because you've got a very individual spot to deal with.
Right.
You know, one small spot. On Columbus, it doesn't make as much sense because you've got an entire length of roadway to deal with. And it's a much more, it's a different problem. You know, if I want somebody to slow down right here, I've got tools that I can make them slow down right here.
Right.
Getting them to slow down over the course of two or three miles, that takes a completely different approach.
So what would you put then?
I'm not sure Cremona is a speeding issue. It's a...
Oh, it's a speed, it's a speeding issue.
It's a going around the curve in the wrong place.
Yeah.
Dad, it's a speeding issue.
I'm not even sure that's striped. So you don't have a, you can cut the inside because it's not a...
We need to collect data on Cremona. That's, that's what we need to do, I believe. I mean, I know that, like you said, it's, is it perception or is it? Well, okay, so at least we can see what the data is for Cremona.
You're not going to be going more than 25 mile an hour around that curve, I can tell you that.
No, you can't. Not if you're staying in the right lane.
No, it's not the curve I'm talking about.
The problem is that they're not staying in the right lane. And we could, we could either have one of you guys or I could send somebody out to stick a camera up and, you know, put the camera up so they could see what's going on at that curve. But I can tell you right now, they're probably hugging the middle of the road as they go around the curve and you can't see around there. And so that's a safety issue.
I don't remember the, what street were you worried about? I don't remember the other ones.
Cremona is, well, Cremona is...
Which one was in your petition?
Cremona.
Cremona, that's, what were the other ones?
And it said nothing except speeding.
I don't remember what else it said.
Didn't say anything about the curve.
It's both ends, you know? And then when you get to the curb, they're still going pretty good. But, I mean, you know, but that's not the only area, you know? I want to, you know, the rumble strips to me may work.
Well, and they'll work in a specific location.
Right, exactly.
That's another one of those that's a spot treatment.
Right. I'm not a, I'm not, I mean, you know, the speed bumps are a pain in the neck. There's no doubt.
Oh, yeah.
You know? And maybe the rumble strips are, maybe, maybe that's where we should start. You know, I mean, you know, it's going to alert them to slow down.
It's also noisy, though. And I want, I want you to be aware of that. I mean, it is a treatment you can do and it'll do what you, you're asking. But you have to be aware that it's also going to be noisy.
For the residents.
For the people who live there. And that's, you have to weigh those things because you can't, you can't make everybody happy and the question is whether or not they want to have somebody die in their front yard.
Right, but the people who live there are asking for people to slow down.
Right.
So you gotta, you know, it's one or the other. I mean, I kind of like the rumble strips over a speed bump, actually, because at least, you know, you can move quick if you have to.
Would Columbus be a good alternative to try putting some of those hundred gallon trees in the middle of the...
I wish. Well, there are a couple of places I did actually recommend that. There are a few small spots on the north side where you've got some cross streets. But in large part, Columbus is, Columbus is the wrong type of, type of road to have a house on it. And I hate to say that, but, but it is. It's just, it's a major through fare. And that's why after the 1970s, they tended to have what some of my friends ungraciously call a tube, where they have the roadway that runs between the subdivision walls. And it's, you know, a non-place place. It really is nowhere, but it keeps from having somebody's front yard on a major highway. One of the things that I would recommend on Columbus that won't make a difference today or tomorrow, but in about five years, is if you start doing an Arbor Day kind of program and start working with your site engineer to make sure you've got good places that you can put trees very close to the roadway, the closer the better. You can't put them in swale. So if there's a way that you can get them like between the swale and the roadway, that would be ideal. If you need to move the swales so that you can stick a tree there, there's something called structural pavement. I'm sure you're familiar with, have you heard of structural pavement? Or structural soil? Okay. Structural soil basically is like, all of the soil is, all of the rocks are about the same size, okay? So there's not a lot of small rocks in the soil. It's all about the same size. And what that allows you to do is when you put a tree in it, the reason why roots bump up, are bunch up in a place is because it's hit a barrier. And then it tries to either destroy the barrier or go over it, right? So with structural soil, there's enough spaces between the rocks that it actually can go around. And so it doesn't end up bunching up or lifting your pavement or doing all of the damage that we think of in terms of trees. So there are ways that you can actually, you know, move the swale if you have to a little bit so that you can get some trees closer to the street. The closer you can get those trees to the street, the better. Now, you're going to have to understand upfront that somebody eventually in the middle of the night is probably going to hit one of those trees. But you've got sidewalks on those roads and you've got bike paths on those roads and you've got golf carts on those roads. And so from my point of view, and this is not always everyone's point of view, but from my point of view, I would prefer to have a tree there that tells everyone to slow down so they don't hit a person than have no trees there and have no people because the people don't feel safe. Does that make sense? It's a tough call sometimes because there are a lot of people within the transportation engineer field that would never want to see anything close to the roadway ever because of the risk of some teenager hitting a tree. And I get that. But at the same time, that teenager's never going to be on his bike. There's never going to be walking. There's never going to be anything going on in that environment other than people driving way too fast down the roadway when you leave it that open. So I can get people to slow down because I've got trees close to the roadway and then make everyone safe all day, all year, or I can worry about the one person that might have a real issue. And I'm worrying upfront because these are the trade-offs. And it's not an easy set of questions to answer. But when you're looking at a place like Columbus where my hands are really very tied and there's not that much that I can do, short of putting a speed bump every 500 feet, which I don't want to do, there's just not an awful lot of options. And so, you know, those are the kinds of things. And anyplace you can do trees, closer to the roadway, it's going to make a big difference. The Granada Boulevard east of Edgewater, if you go a little farther down than the place where I showed you, all of the mailboxes are like right on the road. And believe it or not, that makes a difference. Just having the mailboxes that close to the roadway keeps people a lot slower. And it makes a big difference. Any thoughts? I'm sorry, I, you know, I wish I could make this, I wish I had a magic wand that could tell everybody, never go any faster than you're supposed to. But I'm the one going faster than I'm supposed to, which is why, you know, I, which is why I do this, because I can sit there and say, "You know what? It's not going to slow me down." So it's probably not going to slow anybody else down either.
Well, you've always got the outlier, too. In a 25 zone, it's going to go 50.
Of course.
And that's, that's only enforcement. That's, I mean, we've got to have the sheriff here write tickets.
Idiot-proofing is hard because idiots are really resilient.
Yeah. We've got some.
Sorry.
Presentation was very thorough.
Thank you.
Any further board comment?
No.
I think we should look seriously at taking the first step by getting one of those signs and creating an ordinance where we can fine residents that speed, make it, make it hurt.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
That's a motion.
Second.
Any more comments? Public comment on the motion?
Are we voting on this now? I don't want to vote on this now. Let's have a conversation.
Bill Norcross, resident. I think there's excellent suggestions, a lot of, a lot of interesting ideas, like those signs up there, try to be pleasant about the speed limit. But as a driver, I think that the enforcement or the police being out there really, really helps. And then you say, "Well, we can't ticket it locally, but the police can." Maybe there'd be some kind of alternative of where we could put a lien on a piece of property for a hundred bucks or something. Exactly. That's what, I think it's a good idea. Also, those signs, the portable signs, I think they're very effective to a certain degree, 50%, 60%. They're slowing the traffic down, especially on the main drag out here, the Autobahn that we call the Sun and Lake Boulevard. So I think it's very important that we do have a means of complaining about it and having a flow chart of how to respond. And then, and then maybe we could have some real action, which is really needed because I know my street, Pebble Beach Drive is 21 feet wide. We have mailboxes on both sides. The other day, not the other day, a month ago, there was a landscaping truck on the left side, so I had to pass on the right-hand side. How close that is, is the guy's mailbox was open and my right mirror nicked it just a little bit. And you just sit there and say, "Wow." You know, this is really, really tight. So speed is really important. I think everybody agrees on that. Thank you.
Hello, Louise Parker, Mandavia Drive. And I have a question. Since this study was done during the slowest time of the year in our development, was any thought given? We have inconsistencies in our speed limits everywhere. It's like Route 27. So, and this is a public development. It's not a private development. So we have people coming to play on our public golf course, our public restaurant, hospital and a school. If it's 40 miles an hour on Oruna, 40 miles an hour on Sun and Lake, 25 here, 25 there, was there any thought given as some other developments? The whole development is 25? Because you don't read the signs. Are you going to read the sign that says you're going 40 in a 25?
Let me go ahead and make sure I respond on the record. I understand your concern. And, and there, there are communities where all of the streets are very consistently designed and it makes sense to have a blanket speed limit for the entire area. And you just post it at the beginning when you go in and everybody knows it's all the same speed. This community was actually designed with three layers of roadways. There are collector roadways that are all posted at 30 miles an hour. There are local streets that are all, and all the collector roadways are 20 feet wide. All of the local streets are 18 feet wide and they're posted at 25 miles an hour. Sun and Lake is a completely different matter and it's got a completely different speed limit. But that's actually very consistent throughout the entire community. So the issue is that there are some places where we might not have to keep the speed limit quite that low because there's no, there's no reason for it.
Well, we already have complaints.
Well, no, I'm not talking about places where there's complaints. I'm talking about the north end of Ponce de Leon where there's nobody up there. Or Ortega Street where there's no houses fronting on it. I'm not talking about those places. I'm talking about places where it's a through path, it's not a destination. The destination places, yes, I'd like to keep, those speed limits need to stay the same. And those speed limits are appropriate. If we tried to go ahead and post some of the collectors down lower, I'm not sure that that would actually be effective. Just because the roadways are designed for a slightly higher speed and people can sense that as they drive it, drive through it.
But are they going to continue driving at faster speed as they're cutting through from the hospital to go to Granada to go to Schumacher?
They probably...
Are they going to do that from the school or to get to the public golf course? That's my, that is my concern.
Well, from, from the school to the golf course, that's all on Sun and Lake, right?
The school, there's two schools.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so you're talking about the southern schools?
Yeah. Both, they're both within Sun and Lake. They're both, one's on Ponce de Leon in Sun and Lake.
Right.
So you have people going that way, you have people going Cremona, you have people going...
The cut-through on Cremona, okay.
And you have people going from 27 down by, to Sun and Lake Elementary. That's the whole cut-through. That's why they're going there. They're trying to get to the school.
You know what?
Just a question.
No, no, and it's a fair question.
We may develop, since you don't read the signs, we may develop that people think that they can drive fast everywhere and...
No, and I don't want...
They're a public community, they're not a private closed community.
Yeah, and, and that's the thing. It's, and maybe we need to talk about Cremona a little more aggressively. There may be a few spots where, not in the curves, but in some of the straighter sections, where a yield street may be appropriate there as well for a short section to cut down on the cut-through. If they're using that as a cut-through between the hospital and, yeah, that's, that's another good reason to consider maybe being a little more aggressive there. And that's a current problem. I mean, I'm sure people are doing that.
Well, the whole Sun and Lake is a problem because everybody, where...
Microphone.
Okay, wherever you live is that's the biggest problem to you.
Well, that's true.
And that's what these guys go through every day.
Of course.[1743.83]
It's not one area. So it's not just Crimona, it's everywhere. So, you know, we want to try to fix the worst, I guess, first, and then keep going. We don't want to stop after today. We want to, you know, fix the problem areas. And, and that's what they go through all the time, because if you bring a complaint, it's, the biggest complaint is where you live, not where I live.
Of course. And, and that's, that's human nature. It's perfectly ordinary. The, the thing is, every single one of these complaints, to fix them, takes budget. And you have budget, but not an unlimited amount. And you have time, and you have priorities. And so figuring out how to balance those priorities within the budget that you have is, is going to be the strategy going forward. Now, the other part of that is that you, you've got complaints for looking at raising your fees, even $10. And, and I understand that. People complain about that, raising fees all the time. The question is, what are you getting in return for that? So if you're raising the fees $10 and I get nothing for it, then, yeah, that's a problem. If you're raising my fees a set amount, and I have a list of projects that are going to get done because of that, that becomes a different discussion. Does that make sense?
It does, but I would have to say Crimona is an issue primarily because of the school, because it's become a cut-through for everybody, because the thing, people line up to pick up their kids, and they shut Sun and Lake down every day.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons we have to deal with Crimona, I think, is one of the issues there. And, you know, actually, people are going through the hospital to get around Sun and Lake and then coming, I mean, it is a mess.
Exactly. But again, that's one of the reasons that, rather than continuing to throw speed bumps everywhere if somebody had a problem, we wanted to get the traffic study done, so we could look at what the alternatives are, look at where the problem areas are, and address them in a reasonable fashion with highest priorities and best solutions, rather than just speed bumps everywhere.
I think the most telling thing is that we have no posted speed limits higher than 30 miles an hour that we control. Our problem is people don't follow that law. So the sign and the automatic camera-driven tickets, to me, make as much sense as anything we could spend our money on, short-term.
Assuming we can do that, I assume you'll be involved in-
It'll, it'll involve the county, because we don't have any way to do that right now. We'll have to amend an ordinance and get the county's approval.
Right.
But just to remind the president, we do have a motion on the table.
Right. I would just like to sit back for a minute and maybe have a conversation that, once we buy the machine, where we're going to put it, how much we're going to charge it, who's going to take care of moving it every other day, who's going to take care of issuing the citations, who's going to take care of collecting it. I think we have to agree on all this stuff before we jump and say, let's buy it. I mean, I'm not opposed to them, but we also have three groups of people that we have to get back to.
Well, and I-
If we're only buying one machine, we're not going to make everybody happy. So we have to have a conversation on what we're doing.
Well, I think that's, I mean, not to, to redefine the motion, but I think that's basically what the motion is, is to start that process. It isn't just going to go, we're not going to go out and buy a machine. We're going to say, okay, here's what that process is, and then come back to the board-
Maybe it's two machines.
With, yeah, exactly. Come back to the board with a proposal. Here's what's going to have to happen. You know, in order to make this work, we have, we're going to have to, you know, amend an ordinance, we're going to have to buy one, two, three machines, whatever, come back with a proposal. I think that the motion on the table is for us to start that process.
And then if we do buy those machines, it'll be my job to make sure that, I bring to you what, how we're going to implement it. I mean, that's, that's part of it.
Okay. One, Dan Dills, resident. Talking about the machine, just one question. You were saying you could only fine people that are residents of Sun and Lake if you, you know, have someone writing these tickets. What is considered a resident, though? Is it somebody that ran-
I don't think this is a resident, essentially.
Correct, yeah.
But I just would find anybody who was caught.
Yeah.
The, the issue that was raised by our consultant was that if they are a resident here, we wouldn't be able to enforce the fine.
That was if an HOA were doing it.
Correct.
If it was an HOA.
Yeah, that's, that's for HOAs. We are not an HOA. We can make that, we, we, if we get the power from the county, we'll be able to fine. And we, and we'll probably have to have a conversation with the Sheriff's Department, but I imagine the machine takes a picture of the driver's, you know, the license tag, and then we would, you know, somehow go through the, the Sheriff's Department on figuring out how to get the citation to that person. So this, this would pertain to anyone, not just-
That's why I understand it.
Yeah, okay, because I think, I live on Cantoria, and that is a major problem there. Cut serious. A lot of kids live on that street. You basically can't ride your bike there. You know, it's, my neighbors are just like four, six years old, and it's just an accident waiting to happen. I mean, those guys go through there at 45, 50 miles an hour. And it's just a short street, but they're cutting in off a shoe walker and going across there. It's, it is a major problem there. But they, I'm for something like that as long as it pertains to everybody, not just the residents.
We're, we're too early in the process to really know, but that would be my assumption. If we're going to set it up, we'd set it up for whoever.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I'm also in favor of it, but I'm not, if we can't find them. I mean, it's, it's got to be, I don't want to see a sign saying you're going, and then you just go right on by it. But if we can find them, God bless you. I hope we can do it.
In addition, I would say that we should see what it would cost to get multiple ones that are permanent installations, because we know where we got the problem.
Yeah, because I think it's, it's going to take, it's, it's not just something we can do by ourselves, it's going to have to take coordination between us, the county, and the Sheriff's Office. And I think that we can probably work out some sort of inter-local agreement or something where, you know, maybe we buy the machines and, and the, the Sheriff's Department takes care of the fines, you know, somehow. We, we'll, we'll figure out a way to make it work.
Well, let's be clear that I'm hoping that the fines can help pay for the machines.
Exactly.
Any other public comment? Okay, there's a motion that's been seconded.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
Supervisor Stegal?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes. Okay, General Counsel report.
Not a lot. I met with you, each of you individually earlier this week. The, the planned transition to my IPA is going to be a little bit more complicated than we originally thought, but I hope to have something before the board by the 11th, the meeting on the 11th, but if not on the 11th, definitely by the meeting on the 25th.
Can, can we go back to the traffic thing for one minute? So, just so, when we, when we talk about the machines, and how many, and where we're going to do, et cetera, et cetera, is that what we're going to decide on the three proposals that we have? Is that the plan?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
We have, we have three proposals, right, on, on speed bumps, is what they were at the time.
We have three requests, yes.
Three requests.
Yeah, you're right.
So we'll decide that at that time? So we will know.
I would assume. We'll tie all that together.
Okay. I mean, as long as that's our attention, because people are asking me what the deal is, so, okay.
Well, and, and for the record, I would encourage that any of those communities that have come forward requesting speed bumps, to take a look at the alternatives and perhaps recommend other alternatives. So, for instance, the, the Preserve had suggested speed bumps at the curve on Crimona, and the curve slug might be a better alternative there. Yeah, I think part of this, part of this process will be to amend the speed bump policy to be a traffic, you know, a speed policy, so that we have more, more options other than I want a speed bump here, and that's the only thing they can request.
Would it be to our advantage to invite the heads of those, I mean, each one of the proposals had somebody running it, so to speak?
We, we just discussed that. David and I had just been talking about that.
Yeah, and we're talking about potentially getting, you know, doing a workshop and inviting all the, the presidents of the HOAs, and so that we can get their involvement as well.
So they, yeah, absolutely, that'd be great. Okay.
General Manager's report.
Quickly, I wanted to give an update of where we are with the Clubhouse Lanai renovations. To date, we've paid about 47% on the construction draws, so the remaining budget will be carried over to the next fiscal year, as the project completes in October. The original budget adopted was 1,023,000. We are under budget mainly because of the kitchen equipment that we originally proposed to the board. We are not purchasing all that. We, I'll mention to you all where we are on schedule, so all payments will be paid and completed by the end of October. So really, I, I don't-
Cliff told me that he had to go into that 10% to cover the monies that he's going to need. You're telling me it's on the budget? He's using the, what do you call that, discretionary money?
Yeah, of the 1.2 million, 71,000 was our contingency.
He said he's going to use all of that. That's what he told me.
We-
Because of the changes.
Right, well, we brought to the board the furniture, which the board approved. We, we used, utilized, of the 71,000, we have utilized 53 of that for the furniture. As to date, we have 24,000 remaining in contingency. And that includes, let's see, so we have 24,000 remaining in our contingency.
So he's over the 90?
The contingency was part of the budget.
Contingency is part of the 1.2 million, yes, sir.
We actually saved about $70,000 by not doing the hood.
That is correct.
So you spent that plus $50,000?
Yeah.
So you spent $120,000 on something.
Well, I remember the tile on the bar, that was never really even discussed, was it? I mean, I liked, I mean, it's nice that we're doing it, but I don't think we ever had a conversation on it. To my knowledge, you all just did that, or you all, somebody did it on their own.
Did, I'm sorry, did you have, I mean, yeah, the tile-
The tile work around the bar?
That's correct. What we did is we mentioned it at a board meeting, and it is, it was only a 14, $13,000 project. So based on our policy, we received three quotes to move forward with the tile. That's what we did. We used contingency monies for that as well, 13,800.
Can you share that document with us, so we can understand?
Yes, let me send an email, so-
You're throwing a lot of numbers, and I'm not following.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll send an email. Omar had updated some information on capital, capital projects through, what, this, last week's check run?
He's doing the hallway, too, to the front entrance, right? Isn't that being re-tiled as well?
Yes, sir.
And the other entrance, right? Which one? The other entrance, too.
Oh, the one going out to the cart?
Isn't it going out? That one, too?
We're, we're not going to do anything with that right now.
Oh, okay. Right now.
I mean, I just don't remember being, being told about these things. I'm not against them, but I just don't remember being told about them.
Yeah, we mentioned the tile work. I don't, I have to, I don't recall which board meeting it was, but Cliff had mentioned it during one of his updates, that we were looking into replacing the tile around the bar in the front entrance.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, sir, that doesn't mean it.
None thanks, Dennis?
None.
New Dennis?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment?
Jim Servus, resident. I want to start with a little background leading up to my, what I'm here for. I started visiting here in 1978 when my parents retired here. I bought my place here in '04 and moved here full-time in '06. In year 10, my broker, Tony Javaris, and I talked, and that's about when Sun and Lake Real Estate and Development Services was about to go under, and mostly you know the problem. And we talked, and Tony reserved the name Sun and Lake Realty. Some people thought we were crazy. Didn't start using it right away, but when Bob went away, in 2011, we started using the name Sun and Lake Realty. I very seldom run into anybody that even knows Bob, and I'll say no more of that. We started using it in 2012. In 2018, excuse me, in 2012, I bought the business from Tony. In 2018, along with a club sponsorship and advertising in the local newsletter, golf outings, couple of musicals at the club, my business spent eight, just about $8,000 in promoting Sun and Lake. This year in 2019, we are approaching, we're the little guys, I think you all know that. We're approaching $5 million in sales in this calendar year. The majority of that is in Sun and Lake. In 2019, we've had four sales from referrals of other Realtors, three of them from the north, one of them from the Miami area, can't remember what suburb, doesn't matter. I love it here. That's the only reason I'm doing what I'm doing. The only reason that I bought the business from Tony is that this is really a neat place to be, and I just enjoy telling people. The hardest part, when we paid the money to the club for the, for the sponsorship, was that, that whole year, I had one request from the club to show someone around, and that didn't even, that didn't even get to showing around, because the two people here staying on a stay-and-play wanted a free lunch. So I sat with them for a free lunch and never saw them again. But, oh, well, I do love it here. With my contacts up north, a little hard to say, I'm hearing that we are looking for a real estate brokerage to promote Sun and Lake. I haven't heard anything about that but from up north of here. It's, it really bites. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't really know.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Where is it?
There is rumor here that we are looking for a real estate company to promote Sun and Lake.
Why is that rumor?
I'm surprised that I have not heard anything or any want of our help to promote this. Thank you.
I have a question for Ariel, which she wasn't here when the billboard, the infamous billboard was out there on 27. It was out there one day, and then the next day it wasn't there, somebody told me. And what happened to that, that billboard, which you didn't know about, and the money, the $10,000 which DOT was supposed to give to Sun and Lake? Is that going to be a kind of applied, or is that already spent in a advertising budget?
Bill, that goes back probably three or four years. We received the reimbursement from DOT, and it was not reallocated for a new billboard at the time. I believe Hurricane Irma affected that, and the boards, there was no real initiative by the board to, you know, to rebuild a billboard at the time.
Okay.
So the monies, the monies are just in, inside of our, our fund. It wasn't necessarily spent on anything specifically.
Well, I think, I think billboards are kind of effective, because they're usually low-cost and they should get into the digital thing, which is probably $900 a month, very expensive. So I don't know where you're planning to have these billboards, are they going to be local, going to be up the street 10 miles, or?
WDM is working on making the media purchases right now, so when they, what they're doing is they're out shopping to see what's available as of right now, when it's available, to see what we can purchase. When we get that, when they make those buys, we'll get a report that says we're putting X billboard in this location, it'll be running during this time, but that's something that they're doing as a part of the media buy package.
Obviously, there's three or four companies, Firehouse and a couple of other places, that deal with that, and I hope it's, it's done as reasonably and competitively as possible, because it is very expensive, or a very short period of time flashed on 27. Thank you.
Okay, why don't you get the microphone? To Jim's question, are you aware of any effort to recruit a real estate firm to represent Sun and Lake?
No. No, we're not aware. What, what we, what she mentioned to you earlier about our, our ideas on procedures is that we've talked about two things, real estate leads and development leads. So as, as we receive phone calls, we've talked about all kinds of ideas internally of how we should handle these type of leads. And the online advertising platform that we're going to recommend is for, if a Realtor wants to participate in these leads, or if a developer wants to participate in these leads, there's criteria and fees that would go along with it. If the board is acceptable with that, we would bring that back to the board as an establishment of an advertising fee. of an advertising fee, so that the realtor and the developer would be on our website. And so this will be-